Good evening and welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. I'm hope everyone is doing well tonight. First up is our approval of the minutes from August fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of August the fourth, two thousand and twenty-one as written in the record.
Second.
It's been moved to the seconded. Commissioner Kaufman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wessel.
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye as well. And just in case anybody is keeping count, there's only four of us tonight. So it'll be, it'll be a quick round of votes when we have them. Next up is a public hearing for revised sketch plan, and that's for ASK dash eighty-nine forty dash two thousand and twenty-one Spectrum Sketch Plan Amendment. I won't read the whole explanation. A presenter from staff is Kirk Eby. So Kirk, why don't you go ahead and take care of the formal announcement, please? You're on mute.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Tech team, could you please bring up packet page number twenty-six? So this is a public hearing on Sketch Plan Amendment, ASK dash eighty-nine forty dash two thousand and twenty-one for the Spectrum at Watkins Mill, which proposes to convert two unbuilt commercial pad sites into a multifamily residential building, expand the list of allowed non-residential uses, and perform minor housekeeping items to provide clarity and consistency throughout the sketch plan. The hearing was advertised on August twenty-sixth and September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the Washington Post, and was posted on the city's website beginning on August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Signs were posted on the property and notifications were sent to adjacent property owners within two hundred feet of the site. There are currently twenty-six exhibits in the record, all of which are included in the meeting packet. The individual exhibits may be reviewed at City Hall during regular business hours or on the city's website. Any objections to the receipt of any exhibit should be noted prior to the closing of the record. Otherwise, they will be deemed received into evidence. And before the applicant begins our presentation here on page one, staff would like to provide an overview of the sketch plan amendment process being used for this application. So sketch plans may be amended in one of two ways. The first way is to submit an entirely new sketch plan, which will then be the subject of a joint public hearing, a planning commission recommendation, and final action by the mayor and city council. And the second way is to ask the mayor and city council to conduct a courtesy review and then determine how the amendment should proceed. And the applicant did choose to follow that second method. So at the August sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one mayor and city council meeting, they did conduct a courtesy review, and they found that the amendment had a minor effect. And the council then directed the planning commission to go ahead and hold the public hearing, and then make the final decision on the sketch plan amendment. So this, after the public hearing, will not go back to mayor and council, it'll come back to the planning commission. So again, following the public hearing, the commission will then establish the closing date for the record, and will then take final action at a future meeting. I have more to say about that at the end of the meeting, but I'm sorry.
Kirk, let me just clarify that process. Why, so given that, that it was, that they essentially remanded it or sent it our way to finish up, what is, why do we then delay the findings and not do it tonight?
It's so that there's time for a public record. So if anybody has comments, even without COVID, we usually have a thirty-day record as a minimum, just to allow enough time for people to submit comments on the record. Given COVID, sometimes we have a little bit longer. Staff feels that this is probably not a major enough change to warrant that. So again, I'll have more to say of that at the, at the end of the meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
So now that I've talked about the sketch plan amendment process, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant's team to begin their presentation. And I believe it may be Matt from their team that's presenting, so if we could bring him up.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, so as Kirk mentioned, this is an application to amend Sketch Plan Z three oh one A for Spectrum at Watkins Mill.
Hey, Matt, why don't you real quick, just because people, we listen to the recording, go ahead and read into the record your full name and association.
Yes, Matthew Walters. I'm with BP Realty Developer Associate.
Thank you.
Yeah, the amendment to the sketch plan is to change the use of two approved freestanding pad sites, one a bank, one an office, and amended to a multifamily residential building. This is in response to significant decline in demand for commercial space, especially the freestanding sites, coupled with the strong demand for multifamily housing. Next slide, please. The, as you all, I'm sure, are aware, Spectrum is a mixed-use project. Currently, we've built four hundred and sixty-eight units between Paramount and Majestic Buildings. Those are ninety-eight percent leased at the moment. At the Great Park, that the residents love to spend their time doing different activities at. And we've got forty thousand square feet of retail, mixture of mom and pops and national brands already leased. But unlike the residential, there are still some vacancies in the retail at our project. Next slide, please. The bank pad, we've been marketing, not me personally, but the company's been marketing that for the past twenty years and received no interest over that time. And so while we don't feel retail is feasible in this location, it does seem like the perfect place for another Class A six-story multifamily building. It'll strengthen that edge along three fifty-five. It'd also strengthen that Spectrum Avenue entrance into the project. And again, it really responds to the increased housing demands with life science, IT, and engineering being such a big player in this area. Next slide, please. Okay, so with such a high occupancy, the ninety-eight percent, even having to turn away well-qualified prospects, including a lot of prospects from these employers, as you see on the screen, the ones that you all know in the area, we just don't have enough vacancies for housing these people. Next slide, please. Okay, so the zoning, as you know, this is MXD. The requested change is consistent with MXD zoning, and it represents an evolution toward more urban land use plan. The surrounding areas, MX, we've got MXD to the west with the old Humane Society site, got a picture of commercial and residential to the east. We've got to the south, the Kaiser, and the new Monument project that I believe may have been reviewed by the city, but it's still in the early stages, where I think they're bringing more life sciences to the, the pad that's directly to the south of Watkins Mill Road from our project. And if that happens, of course, they're gonna need a place to live. And then, of course, we got to the north is just the Pepco Utility Corridor, and then Watkins Mill Town Center, which is being developed by a related entity on the other side of two seventy. Next slide, please. Okay, so the site, Spectrum, is thirty-three acres. It's mixed use. It's at the northwest corner of Route three fifty-five and Watkins Mill Road. Again, it's located at the heart of the growing life science node for the region. Our goal at the Spectrum from the beginning was to set a new direction for the east side of Gaithersburg, add Class A product to the area, which in turn helped bring about the interchange and restaurants, retail, and filled up these apartments that we built. Next slide, please. Okay, so this graphic shows the blue, which has been built, light blue is showing the retail spaces that have been built. It is also showing, I don't think my cursor, I can't point to anything here. Well, it, on there, you'll see there's a couple of pink spots that are currently under construction. Starbucks, which is slated to open in October, and Royal Farms, which is slated to open in November. And just last week, I received an email from the county asking for our CAD background so they could start designing the police station again. So finally, the, the two pink areas in the red circle, that's what we're talking about for this amendment, that's the bank pad further north, and then the little office building just south of that pad. Next slide, please. The proposed sketch plan is seeking up to two hundred and twenty-five multifamily units on that pad. And it will be, again, six stories, structured parking, elevator-driven apartment building. Next slide, please. Okay, currently, we're approved for five hundred and eleven market rate MPDU and workforce units, and a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of mixed-use commercial. We're looking for, as I mentioned, this building's going to be two hundred and twenty-five units. Forty-four of those units are approved and unbuilt from Majestic. And so a hundred and eighty-one of those units would be new units that were not approved in the previous sketch plan. The reason for reducing the commercial space is, one, we're getting rid of nine thousand square feet between S and T, the, the subject property. And it's also just to clean up some of the things that haven't happened along the way when we've gotten approved SDPs and site plans, such as Starbucks being slightly smaller than what was approved for that site, Royal Farms as well, had B, and just, I believe Majestic ended up with a little bit less retail than what was approved. So this twenty-six thousand square feet reduction kind of cleans that up. Next slide, please. Okay, so we want to also thank the staff for their great suggestion. They, they figured since we were coming back in for the sketch plan that it made sense to include some uses, not that we will necessarily use it at the property, but to include some uses that we weren't previously approved for, just because of the timing of when this was approved so long ago. So bring it up to date and include things such as integrated light manufacturing, daycares, things like that. It'll give us flexibility to change with the market in the future without coming back in. Next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, so the idea for Paramount, well, for, for the new building would be to really be integrated with the existing ones. Currently, the three apartment buildings, one key will give them access to the amenities in all of the buildings. We intend to continue that. They will share amenities. It will provide new amenities to the residents that currently live there. So that's our plan. They'll also get to obviously enjoy the program gatherings and the park, zumba, concerts, yoga, et cetera. And it will also be age-inclusive, just like the existing buildings. We, we get a high percentage of older adults living there, mainly because of the elevators, and really a lot because of the added security, the garage security, the building security. They tend to really like that. The unit design will be responsive to the local market. Because we get a lot of the biotech and life sciences and older adults, we, we don't usually get large families. It's usually people looking to live with roommates in two-bedroom or just a couple that wants a one-bedroom or one-bedroom den. So it will be ranging from studios to two-bedroom dens, basically to respond to that market. And again, we'll build with sustainable, durable materials, like we usually do, brick and precast. We want these to last. Next slide, please. Okay, this is just Performance Park here. You see the retail in the park, that this is, this project is right behind Paramount West from this park, so they'll be able to experience all the same amenities, all the same features that the community has, the existing community experiences. Next slide, please. All right, next slide. So this is a preliminary look at what it, what it could look like. It's there at the top of the page there. You can see there how it really strengthens that entrance and that edge. It also, we, we would like for it to not only share amenities, but physically connect to the terrace at Paramount West, so they have the same easy access that Paramount West has to that existing pool and that terrace, as well as expanding upon that terrace and providing two extra ones as well. Next slide, please. This is just, to reiterate the, the quality, we broke ground last week on a similar project in Germantown. There's a huge hole out there. You can go see it. It's, it's right between the Red Robin and the movie theater off of one eighteen. And this shows the, the high-quality materials that, that we intend to use. Next front, or next slide, please. Okay. Just to reiterate, what we're looking to do is amend the use for the two pad sites that are currently unleaseable to multifamily. So it'll be removing four thousand square foot bank and five thousand square foot commercial space. And the new building will be two hundred and twenty-five units with three levels of below ground, well, three levels of structured parking, one level below, two above grade. It'll be six stories above grade residential. And next slide, please. All right, next slide. All right, so that's it. If anybody has any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on the presentation? Or Matt, I guess I should ask, you're, you're done with the presentation? Your team's? Okay. Commissioners, any questions?
Unless Scott had anything he wanted to add.
Okay. Anyone? Go ahead and fill.
I, I, my one and only question slash concern, you know, was there any, any discussion of, I know the market, based on what you said at the beginning, for at least the standalone pad site retail is, is not, doesn't support the original, original sketch plan, but there's a whole lot of street frontage in this new proposed building that doesn't look like it has any retail, any street-level pedestrian activity. So was there consideration for putting, you know, smaller retail integrated in with the ground floor of this, of this plan? Because right now, it doesn't look like there's any flexibility for that.
All right, I didn't mean myself. Yeah, so it, we have thought about it. We have a couple of retail space. We, we have specifically one retail space that is further down Paramount East that really struggles to get traffic. And it's just kind of set back a little bit from everything else, and everything's concentrated at the top of that hill. That hill's kind of a barrier as far as walking goes, and it, it really doesn't have the same, I don't know, urban community feel that the rest of the retail is all kind of centered around that Performance Park and, and toward the major roads. And, and this is really just, I, I don't think you're going to get the traffic needed.
Okay. Let me, let me. A model, oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
I was going to tag on to that just a bit. I mean, I, I think I understand what you're talking about, because, because obviously, we, we, I've been there quite a bit, and others have too. And I think we've experienced kind of the, the natural flow of experiencing the Performance Park and the retail. But given that the sketch plan is also going to open up uses like light manufact, integrated light manufacturing, daycare, does that open up opportunities for something to happen down on that side other than residential? Or should it, you know, does it make it more marketable as something other than residential, once you add those uses to the, to the sketch plan?
So I, I don't think, regardless of what it is, you, it would need, if it's not the apartments, it would need, in my opinion, more visibility than it has. From three fifty-five, I think part of the reason that the bank just never, there was never a bank or any commercial space interested. It, it fairly steep hill there. From three fifty-five, you're not, you're not really seeing much of anything on the ground level there. I, I just don't think anything other than the retail is viable. We, we're doing, the, the new building in Germantown as well. We, we have more than enough retail and vacant retail spaces around us in Germantown, so that, that building was built without any retail.
Yeah, no, I, I wasn't advocating retail. What I'm asking is the, the new uses that would be permitted under the revised sketch plan. Kirk, I think when you set it up, there were two specific ones, which were integrated light manufacturing and daycare. I don't know what else was added to the list, but just taking those two, for example, did those make this site more marketable or viable as something other than residential?
So Scott Wallace here with Miles and Stockbridge, if I may. Hello, everyone. And, and when I start talking planning speak, it usually doesn't go well, but I'm going to just give it a try here. I think, I think we, we look, and the Spectrum team looks at these additional uses as helpful to have around if one of them comes up. I don't know that we embraced them as particularly likely in the short term or long term, but, but having that flexibility was important. But more so, we look at these as good uses to be added, adding so that for infill purposes, for existing retail spaces, if they go vacant, having, having these available to act quickly on them if that tenant comes up in the marketplace rather than new construction. I, I'm reminded of when Peterson came for Washingtonian for the spa use, the day, you know, kind of odds, not odd spot, but do you know that medical spa type use? Having that ability to match quickly and grab one of these uses, if they come about as an infill space, I think is a desire to have this list of uses.
Fair enough. Good answer. I, I was just looking for kind of a perspective, or thank you. Matt, I'm sorry, I cut you off. Matt Hopkins, I cut you off when you tried to get in there.
No, I suppose I was just trying to also peg off of Phil, and I was going to ask a leading question, but maybe that's not fair. So I was gonna really just ask, I, you know, I, I certainly follow the argument and public testimony from three, four, or five years ago, whenever it was, this, this first sketch plan came before us, was I didn't like that retail down at the end of the hill. But talking those guys out of pad sites was difficult back then, so we gave up a few. But my concern is similar to Phil's, to how are you going to treat that streetscape? You know, the sketch plan is rough, you know, boxes on a plan, I get it. But, you know, there's sidewalks indicated, you know, several driveways, there's three driveways along that piece. You know, my, my concern is how are you thinking about that pedestrian pathway? So somebody coming out of that building or somebody coming across the street, which should be relatively rare, but there is a light there. Somebody walking their dog down the block, right, towards, towards the bridge, or I mean, towards the woods or something, and then coming back up. You know, what kind of pedestrian environment are they gonna, are they gonna be presented with?
And, and similarly, how are you treating, again, this is, this is sort of a, we'll say, we'll say that we're, we're doing you a favor for the actual site plan review, but two stories of above-grade parking underneath the retail with nothing else at the ground level raises a whole lot of concerns about how you treat that facade and what that, what that looks like from the pedestrian experience. Typically, it's easier when you can hide, hide the parking behind the, the ground-level retail units. It makes that problem go away. So fair warning, when, when you get to the architecture, that's going to be a considerable concern.
Understood. We, we, we have thought about that. If, if you can go back to the previous slide, that would be great. I think it zooms in a little bit more on this. Okay, so we actually have, and this is something we, again, did in Germantown with, we think will be successful, but it certainly looks good on the drawings. We actually have, unlike the Paramount East and Majestic and Paramount West, we will have, under the podium slab, same level as the garages, we will have units that come all the way down to the ground along three fifty-five. That'll solve hopefully that facade. The facades that are along the street here, that's where we're going to place our amenities to activate that streetscape. Like the gin, well, I don't know specifics of the amenities. I actually haven't seen the most recent version by the architect. But we are going to have the lobby for sure there. It, it's not going to be garage. And if there is a, a portion of it that is garage, it will certainly be done up to not look like.
I, I think we should, we should add a little more discussion about that point when we get to the public hearing. So Phil, keep that on your list of, continue to, to talk about it, but, but I think the clarification is good. Commissioners, any, any other questions for the, Lloyd, please?
You've got the green, the game preserve right behind it, but you're giving up some green space, I would imagine, because you had pads before. Now you've got this very large building coming in. Can you explain how this may impact the green space and what percentages it take away? And how much percentage of green space do you still have available to you?
Scott, do you know the actual numbers? I, I know that we have addressed it, and we are meeting the code. I, I don't know the specifics.
Yeah, we exceed now the open space, a green space. I remember what, what it's called, gates for green space, green area requirement. And while there may be some adjustment to that, it'll, if it will be refining that as part of STP. So we, we will still, obviously, meet or, but definitely, and I think still exceed as well. But we're still refining that, and we'll know more about that at STP.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're definitely aware of it, and we're keeping, we're keeping an eye on it as part of the STP process.
Let me ask another question for context. You were talking about proposing two hundred and twenty-five units. Put this in context of the units that are on-site now through the, the two or three buildings that already exist. Are these on par with those units? Are they going to be, you know, a premium for those units? Are they going to be something a little bit more affordable than those? Where, where do you put it on the spectrum? No pun intended, for what, what you've got there now and what you're adding for unit type, for mix, for kind of caliber and quality, those are those.
Yeah, the, the intention is to make it, because of the success we've had with the existing units, again, they're ninety-eight percent leased. We intend to provide much of the same. Well, certainly in quality, it's going to be the same, if not nicer, because it will be newer.
It'll be the same size, square footage per unit, without the same, things like that?
Yeah, we, we've done a little bit of refinement from our process with a new architect through the Germantown project. And so some things have been refined based on what was working, what wasn't working in the existing projects, what people liked. Everything's working in terms of leasing, but we get feedback on what they like and what they don't like. We work that into the plan in Germantown, and we'll carry that through, because we're constantly learning about these, these things. But it'll be very much the same.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, any other questions before we go to the public? Okay, seeing no, and tech team, do you want to go ahead and play the, the video for instructions to testify, please?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to go to the attendees list, and I currently see no hands up. So let's let that play out for a few, for a couple of minutes here. I will remind folks watching that the staff has recommended that we close our record, or I should say, keep it open until October fifteenth. So that means that written testimony can continue to come in, either by email, letter, whatever, whatever's convenient for, for any comment you might have. So tonight is not the final, final chance. In the meantime, why don't we go ahead and discard, excuse me, start our discussion on what we've heard? And then just to give some time for, for hands to go up if they need to, and then we'll move on to, to sort of the next steps or, or getting this set up for our, for our recommendation or our findings in a month or so. So I think the one thing I want to open with is a couple of, to reiterate a couple of points. I think the discussion about the relative green space that this contributes to the overall project is something to be concerned about, but there's also plenty of opportunities. So not knowing yet how the final site plan is going to end up, there's a tendency for buildings like this to do one of two things. They either become introverted or extrovert, or they become internalized, or they, or they embrace the streetscape. The, the, the spot on the map doesn't really tell you one way or the other. The 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 spot on the map doesn't really tell you one way or the other. There's 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 a potential for either one to happen. And I think what we'd like to encourage is that it that it fully embraces the streetscape and makes that a priority. And and that might come in a lot of forms. One is to be more discreet about where the garage entrances are. Um you know, turn more of a green buffer and and amenity kind of space toward the street. I see there's a plaza kind of notched out of both both legs of the building or both both um uh I'll call it legs, both both sides of the building. You know, maybe maybe turning those both towards the public side. I don't know. But but the point is, there's lots of opportunity there to favor being a part of the the more public realm rather than just be a kind of a wall against the street. So I think we'll be looking for something that that does that. If if this density, and and I I think what we want to see is a little bit more explanation, at least I would. The footprint is pretty imposing if you compare it to the other buildings on the site. If you know, it 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 obviously has some jogs and some some changes to it, so it's not going to appear massive, but there's a lot of footprint there to play with. And I would be interested in seeing the relative comparison of proposed units to um what's on the site already. So it could be a per square foot comparison. It could be a, you know, something that gives it some relative context. Really just to get a sense that there's a a comparable density and with this building is, and by the way, this is site plan kind of stuff. This isn't necessarily sketch plan stuff. Um but it is part of, I think, maybe I should say STP kind of stuff to get get a get a better sense of density. Commissioners, I think I want to open up to you. Do you see any issue with allowing the record to stay open with this sole proposal of residential? Is there any any issues you guys have with this this use coming onto the site without any anything else proposed within the plan, within the sketch plan?
Uh I don't. Um I hear you guys, uh but uh I absolutely don't. I I think it's a big disaster to put anything retail or even sort of uh service oriented down at this end. It it is all the things that the applicant mentioned and in my mind, worse. So it's uh I think the last thing we want is something dead down there. I think programmatically, it's exactly what we need, which is feet on the street up there to support the existing retail, to sort of have that retail really sing rather than rather than suffer along. And and it's all sort of food and beverage entertainment oriented um stuff up there, you know, there's 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 quite a bit of service square footage in the city. Uh and uh to to say the least. So um you know, let's let's fill up that square footage and let's keep this a vibrant food and beverage entertainment based piece and another two hundred and fifteen units. Uh which again is about, you know, about thirty percent increase over the existing, you know, uh uh creates a a good wave of customers, which I think will fill the rest of that retail and and make it places that those of us who don't live on the property but live near it are going to want to go there and and people watch. So uh to me, it's exactly the thing that we were sort of pushing for years ago, actually. Uh and um uh really happy to see those pad sites gone. Um and 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 actually, Lloyd, I'll I'll respond to a little bit of my my thoughts on the green space, which is, you know, one of my pet peeves too. But I like green space. It's not an island in a parking lot. I like green space. It's not between two pad sites. I like green space. It's not even at the edge of a surface lot. I like green space that's either concentrated into something that's very well programmed in a small spaced area or natural, right? Which is, I think, what this building gives us. So in my mind, it's much better. And my big, big concern is that first twenty feet on the building and the first twenty feet out from the building. And as to John's point, there's all kinds of tricks and things that need to be done there. Um including putting some of the amenity programming there. Um but uh but the actual detailing and the drawings and the how you're going to treat it and how the the drive aisle, you know, not just how how tight the radius are is, but what's the service, you know, that goes across that drive aisle to make it to make the person who's walking along the street feel like it's their it's their territory to go across that drive aisle and they don't have to even shouldn't even have to look. I hope they do, but shouldn't even have to look for a car because it's their area. It's their their place. So that that's my whole thought.
Thanks, Matt. Good, good, good points.
I would agree with you, Matt. Uh from an economic perspective, I think it's it's ideal. Uh my only concern is the topography. It's quite an imposing hill as you go up into the project itself. And how it's treated and uh what the final plan looks like, I think is really, really critical here. Uh I don't know how you would put a six-story building on a hill like that, but I look forward to seeing what that sketch plan looks like when you bring it to us, because uh that is uh that is the main entrance basically into the project and it's critical, I think, as you come around on three fifty-five to make it not as imposing, but more welcoming. Uh to make Pat Matt's uh Matt's point uh to make it more inviting for people to actually get out of their cars and walk around and to feel like they're in something special.
You know, let me follow up on some there. I I um Phil, I don't mean to cut you off. You feel free to jump in, but I I do want to clarify something. When the infrastructure was built, um there's a divided entry lane right right there at at what becomes like a Spectrum Boulevard or or changes name and across at three fifty-five, but i- is there any reason to think that that's the wrong road configuration now that this becomes a residential block? You know, is it is it is there? There's a too much divided road there for what essentially becomes less about a grand entrance into a into a neighborhood and more about maybe a secondary and just given that a lot of the commercial side off of Watkins Mill and and coming off up a little bit farther is probably the the beacon for people coming onto the site from offsite. So it's just sort of a question. Um you know, anybody can jump in here, but but maybe I don't know, Matt Walters, if if you guys had had um on the development side had even thought about that or if that was even part of the discussion.
Uh I can't speak for Peter or Brad or or the rest of the team. I I I had not thought about that street being anything other than it is. But it's certainly something I'll take back to the team and mention them.
I I think that the challenge here is that the way this site has evolved, you know, that's the signalized intersection. So from a traffic planning standpoint, that's where the main entrance wants to be, but it's actually the back door.
Yeah.
And and where everybody wants to go and honestly, most of the times I go there, I go to the light, make a U-turn and then come in between Starbucks because it's closer to parking and it's
Yeah.
So so it's it's a little bit of a unforeseen, or maybe not unforeseen, but it's just sort of a result of the way that the planning worked out and at least looking at this plan, it almost looks like the divided in the divided road there is is sort of important to mirror the conditions on the other side and to provide your two lanes of, because I believe that that exit has two lanes. It's got to turn. It's got two lanes in in the exiting direction out of the space, so.
Well, that's a good point. I mean, it it creates an alignment with everything else that's going on there regardless of the traffic it generates. So that so the alignment is important. I I get you there. I guess I'll put it on the table as as something for the development team to think about when they're trying to resolve the access points into the building or the access points onto the site, that if if there needs to be a modification there, don't be afraid to think about that, because we also don't want to create a lot of driveway and a lot of workarounds just because there's a median that's that's existing there. So it's something that, you know, you guys can look at that in more detail when you're really getting into the planning.
And staff, obviously, you know, Kirk Kirk would love to hear what, you know, the pros say about what's going on, big picture, not just on the property, but what's happening across the street and
Yeah.
I know it's a, you know, it's three fifty-five, but
Great point.
We studied it to death.
Yeah, but that can come with maybe in preparation for STP or as as you work through this. Um Phil, uh please jump in um with your comments.
I I think the only thing I was going to say since I'm the one who brought up the the retail in the beginning is I I agree with what with what Matt had said and and all of the discussion. My concern is not at all about retail. It's all about architecture and street experience and pedestrian experience and whether that's units or building amenities or retail. In my book, it all sort of does the same thing at this site. So uh I have I have no issue, but everything from the lighting to the landscaping to the facade to the sidewalks to the materials is all going to be monumentally important when we get there.
Good. Okay, thanks. Well, team, I think what we're hearing is that barring any any new information that comes in during the uh the record being opened until October fifteenth, or at least what was being recommended, we'll resolve that in a minute. Um barring any any significant um information that comes in there might change our mind. It sounds like we're we're settling on a a pretty favorable approach to looking at this sketch plan um as proposed, so it it and it also sounds like most of our concerns will be resolved at STP and 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 final site plan, and I think you've got good notes to work from from that discussion. Anything else, Commissioners, you want to add to the to the discussion tonight?
Just I I just I meant to, um Lloyd brought up a good point about just the the rear facade is actually a sort of entry facade, you know, threshold facade for the city. So that piece that sort of faces um, you know, north on three fifty-five, you know, not three fifty-five itself, but that facade, obviously, I I'm sure the applicant had no intention of changing materials as it turned the corner. Uh but just to put it on the record, um it's not a back facade. It's not a rear facade.
Great point.
No hard plank.
Okay, good. Um all right. So I never got any hands up from the public. Um so Kirk, why don't you um just to kind of put a put a framework around this, go ahead and read the uh the recommendation for us to to continue.
Sure. Uh thank you, Chair. Uh so staff does recommend, as Commissioner uh Chair Bauer mentioned, that the planning commission hold their record open until October fifteenth. And that'll be a thirty-one day record uh with anticipated final action during their your November third, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Okay. Does that need a formal motion or is that just a discussion point tonight?
I believe you need a motion.
Okay. Uh so um anybody have any issues with that recommendation? Okay. Okay, I think with that, then if there's a if there's a motion, please.
Jim and I move that uh we have uh that planning commission uh should announce the closing of the record, which staff recommends to be five P M. On Friday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh the commission then will take final action on sketch plan amendment application at its November third, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Second. Okay, so moved and seconded. Commissioner Kaufman?
Aye.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Westall?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Um and again, for the public watching or anyone reviewing the record, um the record is open until October fifteenth for any and all comment on on this application. Matt Walters, Scott Wallace, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. And have a good day, a good evening.
You all too. Well, all right, that takes us to our site plan agenda. We we have two, but I I have a suspicion these are going to be concurrent, but but I'll let Kirk uh provide more background. This is for A F P eight nine 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 dash twenty twenty-one Asbury Methodist Village resubdivision of the Villas parcel into one new parcel and three single family lots at twenty-four, twenty-eight, and thirty Maryland Avenue in the R ninety medium density residential zone and together with also and and with that also is A F P dash nine zero 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 nine thousand dash twenty twenty-one Asbury Methodist Village resubdivision of the administration building parcel, one lot and one partial lot into one new parcel and one new single family lot at Six Lee Street uh in the R ninety medium density residential zone. So Kirk, go ahead and uh pick it up from there and 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 give us the details, please.
Okay, thank you. Um good evening, Commissioners. Um again, uh tech team, could you please bring up a packet page three fifty-six? Um so staff is before you tonight with uh the two amendment final site plans that Chair Bauer mentioned, uh A F P dash eighty-nine ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-one, uh which can also be called the Russell Avenue lots and A F P dash nine thousand dash twenty twenty-one, which could also be called the Lee Street lot. Um and both the applications are being reviewed concurrently by the commission tonight. Um each application does propose to resubdivide an area of Asbury into new parcels and lots as Mr. As Chair Bauer mentioned. Um so for both applications, the new parcels that are created will retain their uh housing for the elderly use and the standard uh we'll call it standard R ninety zoning. While the new uh lots that are going to be uh used for uh detached uh single family houses, that'll be the new use for those. And they will also utilize the cluster development option within the R ninety zone, and that's primarily to meet the density requirements of uh of the zone. So Amendment A F P dash eighty-nine ninety-nine twenty twenty-one, which is uh the Russell Avenue lots. It also has a related special exception amendment, uh B O A dash ninety seventeen dash twenty twenty-one. And that was approved by the Board of Appeals on September eighth, twenty twenty-one. And that reduced the area of the housing for the elderly use that's associated with the Villas um by removing that area that's going to be used for the new lots for the three houses, the three existing houses on Maryland Avenue. And there are also four related uh resubdivision plats, uh R P dash eighty-nine seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one, R P dash eighty-nine seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one, R P dash eighty-nine eighty dash twenty twenty-one and R P dash ninety thirty-three dash twenty twenty-one. And all of those are included in tonight's agenda and the commission will be taking action on those uh following the site plan amendments. Uh so these applications uh come before the planning commission in accordance with sections twenty dash five and twenty dash fifty-five of the city subdivision ordinance, also known as chapter twenty. And that's related to the actual resubdivision of the law of land. And also sections twenty-four dash thirty and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city zoning ordinance, also known as chapter twenty-four. And that's related to uh the cluster development option of the R ninety zone. Uh that's the twenty-four dash thirty part. And also the granting of amendments to final site plans, which is the twenty-four dash one seventy-two A part. And now I'm going to turn over to uh Mr. Mike Reynolds with the uh or Mr. Jody Klein. I'm not sure which one of them is presenting, but somebody from Asbury will be presenting their application.
Good evening. For record, my name is Jody Klein, attorney with Miller Miller and Champion Rockville, representing Asbury Methodist Village. Actually, I think both Mr. Reynolds and I will defer since it's mostly a uh a subdivision issue and let this Jeff Sinearo make the presentation. Mr. Reynolds and I are available to answer your question you have about sort of the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish, but I think the more technical things that uh Mr. E B.'s mentioned are best addressed by Mr. Sinearo. So Jeff, could you proceed, please, with your PowerPoint?
Yes, sir. Um uh my name is Jeff Sinaro. I am uh the owner and and civil engineer for um for this project with C M S Associates. Um first of all, I'd very much like to thank Kirk E B. For all his help and and work on this on getting this done, because it was a it was it was a tough one as far as putting all this together. So and I appreciate everybody taking the time to hear this. Let me try to share here. Can everybody see my screen?
We're seeing the first page of this packet three fifty-six. Is that what you have up?
Unfortunately, you're not able to actually share your screen.
Oh, I'm not. Okay.
Yeah, so you can just say next plate.
Oh, okay. Then you have the same thing too as well. So, okay, yes, please, next screen. So basically, for for those of you who who don't know as much about Asbury, um the what is commonly called in the in the larger eastern set side of what you see um right here, the Asbury main campus uh is on the right and the the at what we consider the Asbury Villas one is on the left. Other people have different terminologies for it, but that those two pieces of the Asbury uh campus are are bicycled by uh as or by Russell Avenue. Let me see the next one, please. And out of those two separate pieces that that are that are uh bicycled by Russell Avenue on the west side where the Villas one was located, there are three lots on the southern end of that which front along uh Maryland Avenue, which is the Maryland Avenue F A F P eight nine nine twenty twenty-one. Uh and they are three houses which have been part of the that that parcel, which was the Asbury Villas one for for very, very long time. And those uh those three lots, Asbury would like to subdivide into three separate lots with the larger piece being the fourth lot uh or parcel uh of the main Villas uh community. On the southern end of the main uh campus uh is a road by by the name of Lee Street. And uh there was a single house there which has been used on and off throughout the years, but still a part of the Asbury community and and property. Would like to subdivide that small piece uh and house out and and then leave the upper parcel um alone i- 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 as it has been uh parceled out throughout the years um is the is the Lee Street piece. Um next slide, please. And so on the Maryland Avenue, as you'll see outlined and read more of of what we had as the fi- as the amendment to the site plan, it was a larger picture of the southern section of the Asbury Villas. Those are the three lots we would like to subdivide uh and take out uh for uh Asbury to possibly sell and remove from the community itself. Uh I I just took kind of a through in the picture of the the house that's actually on the right that kind of looks down at those three houses. Uh and we'd like to to be resubdividing the Asbury Villas parcel into a smaller parcel and and three additional lots. One of each of the existing detached houses uh the subdivision by using the cluster option of the R ninety zone uh for the three uh existing houses to be the three separate lots.
So to be clear, right now, that parcel is platted as one piece that includes the whole Villas development plus these three houses?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Uh next slide. This is the single house on the southern part of the uh of the uh Asbury main campus. Uh as you'll see, that's the house and outlined in red is the lot that we would like to take out of that parcel uh for Asbury to have the opportunity to sell. And um again, this is to uh the resubdividing of one existing parcel uh and lot and part of lot owned by Asbury into a And lot and part of lot owned by Asbury into a new parcel for the Wilson Building and a new lot for the existing houses. Two separate for pulling that out of the other parcel, that that larger piece is a little more complicated because it has quite a few parcels associated with it. And this subdivision is being done by using the cluster option of our ninety zone for the one existing house. And that basically is how simple that presentation is. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, so just a quick history lesson, on the three houses on Maryland Avenue. When they were developed, were they on separate parcels and then they were consolidated or how did all that happen that this is now needing to be re-subdivided?
I will defer to Mike Reynolds for that one. I I'm not exactly sure. I think if I'm not mistaken, Mike Reynolds and I both came in to do an Asbury work. And Mike's part of Asbury itself, but they we they came about the same time, about twenty-nine, thirty years ago, so Mike may, but maybe he'll answer that question.
Well, in lieu of that, this is Jody and I'll I'll jump in up. The houses on the right and left, we're called twenty-four and thirty Maryland Avenue, they were existing residences on the main Asbury campus property. When they got incorporated into the Villas, the lot or the the intervening space was built with a new house. A specially designed villa unit, it was called they called it unit type B, but it's different than all the other Villas. If I could draw, Mr. Eby, could you take me back to page three fifty-seven, please? If you look at the Villas parcel on the left-hand side, you can see how those three are sort of an adjunct, they don't really. Incorporate themselves well into the flow of the layout of Villas. And I'm guessing that's probably why Asbury decided they could be excised and possibly eventually sold off as independent units.
Yeah, that's actually not, that's not the mystery. What what I was trying to figure out was why they ended up this way if if they were. Because, you know, the streetscape of Maryland Avenue kind of suggests those houses were built as part of Maryland Avenue. And and if they were, it's it's I was just curious if they were on separate parcels at one point. And then consolidated because Asbury acquired this larger piece or if they'd always been part of a larger piece for whatever reason, families agreed on, I don't know. Whatever it might be. But there's no record of them ever having been separate parcels, I guess, is the answer to the question.
Mr. Chairman, I I don't recall, I probably should remember that we, when we went through the subdivision, we either. Did incorporate them in the new plan and extinguish existing lot lines, or they didn't have existing lot. Don't know that for a fact.
Okay, fair enough. It didn't, we didn't even get in that deep. I just was curious if there was a backstory to this, but that it all makes perfect sense. Okay, thank you. Did I did I cut off the presentation or are you are you all done with that?
Oh, no, I'm done with the presentation. Unless unless there's other questions.
Okay, fair enough. Commissioners, any questions for for the applicants team? Nothing? Okay, don't be shy.
I'll ask why Kurt doesn't have Trudy's secret history book on.
That's a great question. Yeah, I I don't. I think maybe what happened is that those lots on the ends were perhaps. Actual separate lots and then when Asbury bought the property, they consolidated into one large parcel and then, as they mentioned, they did come back. And build the middle house there at later at a later date. I think the other two houses are older than.
Clearly, yeah, clearly they are, yeah, yeah, okay, good enough. Alright, and I don't see, well, let's just so that we 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 do this all in the right right order. If there are any further questions from the commissioners for the applicants team, tech team, would you put up the public hearing instructions, please?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop. Comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Alright, thank you. So let me let me pull up that tab. I don't see anybody raising their hand. Okay, so not seeing any. Did I hear somebody chiming? No, okay, I'm seeing nobody that wants to test by Kirk, why don't you go ahead and read the recommendation, please?
Sure, and of course, staff does have two recommendations for the commission, one for each application. And I believe the commission will need to make the motion for each of the of the applications separately. So first, staff recommends that the planning commission, based upon the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings and staff recommendation. Grant A F P dash eighty-nine ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-one amendment to final plan approval. Finding it in compliance with sections twenty-five and twenty-five of the city subdivision ordinance, chapter twenty. And sections twenty-four dash thirty and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city's zoning ordinance, chapter twenty-four. And then the second staff recommendation is that the planning commission, based upon the exhibit submitted, the staff report, staff findings and staff recommendation. Grant A F P dash nine thousand dash twenty twenty-one amendment to final plan approval. Finding it in compliance with sections twenty-five and twenty-five of the city subdivision ordinance, chapter twenty. And sections twenty-four dash thirty and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city zoning ordinance, chapter twenty-four.
Great, thank you. I don't want to jump to any conclusions, but I feel like this is largely a housekeeping item. And in fact, the the three parcels on Maryland Avenue might actually be a an incremental improvement to return those. Those lots more to the neighborhood and less to the less to the larger campus over the longer term. Not not that they're not good neighbors now, but but just that that might end up being being something that's more integrated with the neighborhood than than just the the campus. But commissioners, any any concerns with the proposal? Okay. Well, if there's no discussion or any concerns, oh, Matt, did you raise your hand? No, okay. The the screen's small, I apologize. First up then would be the. The three lots on Maryland Avenue, A F P eight nine 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 dash twenty twenty-one, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, staff reports, staff findings and staff recommendations, grant A F P. Eight nine 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 dash twenty twenty-one amendment to final plan approval, finding it in compliance with section. Twenty-five and twenty-five-five of the city subdivision ordinance and section. Twenty-four dash thirty and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city zoning ordinance.
Second. It's moved and seconded, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Westall. And I vote aye as well. Next up is A F P nine thousand dash twenty twenty-one, the single lot on that six Lee Street, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'll read it again. I moved that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted, staff reports, findings and staff recommendations, grant. A F P nine thousand dash twenty twenty-one amendment to final plan approval, finding it in compliance with section twenty-five. And twenty-five-five of the city subdivision ordinance and section twenty-four dash thirty and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A, the city zoning ordinance.
So moved and seconded, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Westall. And I'll vote aye as well. I think that's the record for the motion taking longer to read than. The actual discussion of the item under consideration. Okay, so those passed, you know, I say thank you very much for that. That would move us on then to the record plaits, the record plot agenda that reflects those new subdivisions. Are there any questions about the plaits as they've been. Presented in the record or on the agenda? Okay, with that is our motion on the record plot agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the record plat agenda is presented tonight on the agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Westall. And I vote aye. Alright, that takes care of that. Asbury team, thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate all the work you did on that. I know it's. A lot of work for, it seems like a little bit of a little bit of stuff, but good luck and and. As always, regardless of what I said about the Maryland Avenue houses, Asbury is a a very valued and and. Respected neighbor in the city of Gaithersburg, so. Have a good evening, everyone. Alright, that takes us to, from the commission, Lloyd, can I start with you tonight?
Well, just to remind everybody, school is in, believe it or not, after eighteen months, so be careful. Buses are out there and kids are walking and it almost feels like it's normal, almost. Hopefully, we'll get there soon enough.
Great point. Matt, anything tonight?
No, appreciate Lloyd's optimism, it's great.
Yeah, Phil?
Nothing for me this evening.
Okay, and I don't I don't have anything to add. Greg, what do we got cooking?
So, as you may remember, we were supposed to resume in-person meetings starting next month on October. Unfortunately, that's been pushed back again. Till the end of the year, so as of now, we are tentatively looking at possibly resuming in-person meetings in January. Obviously, again, it's all subject to change. And then just a reminder, the next meeting is October second or sixth, sorry.
Okay, great, thank you. John Schlecking, anything you want to jump in and add tonight?
Actually, I don't, but I I got, I just got kicked out of the meeting, but I but got brought back, so I'm here again. So if you have any questions for me, I'm here.
Okay, but you didn't, no updates on big deals and big, big events in the city tonight, huh?
We have a lot cooking, you know, as Greg said, you know, it's now been announced that. Live in-person meetings won't resume until January, which is disappointing for us because our department actually is almost hundred percent back at work. But. Yeah, there's a lot going on, had a good conversation today on Lake Forest Mall, I'm hopeful that. Something's going to happen pretty soon on that, so in accordance with the awesome master plan that we all just passed. Months ago, so.
You mentioned staff is back, so and you're receiving the public customers at the at City Hall kind of as normal, right, or as usual?
Yeah, we've been open again. We closed for a little while again in the winter, but we've been open for a long time and. You know, we're pretty much fully staffed at City Hall, our department, not the rest of the city, but our department.
Good, good.
I actually, now that you jogged my memory a little bit on other big things going on in the city, John, and question for John Schlecking and Greg, maybe. I know I I've been thrilled to see the success of the new restaurant that's opening in Old Town, the South House Garden. In fact, to the point where I went there last Saturday for takeout and every parking space in the lot on the Fishman site was jammed. People were parking on the streets. It was awesome to see that level of activity in Old Town. I couldn't help but think as I was parking to pick up my takeout, how is this going to work? And what is the impact going to be when construction eventually starts on the Fishman site? So I wanted to flag that and and see. You know, has there been talk about, you know, when that plan was put into place, there was very little activity there. I'd hate to see a brand-new and seemingly incredibly successful business get tanked. For construction impacts on an adjacent site.
There's been a lot of discussion, Phil, and and Greg may be able to fill in a little bit more, but. One of the things that the city has provided to the granary developers, that's Doug Jamal and. And Winkler is fifty spaces in the Gaithersburg Station parking garage across the street. And I I think there's got to be, we'll probably have to do some public awareness about the fact that those spaces are there. Because there are fifty spaces, they're not. They're not dedicated, but there are fifty spaces that are public parking spaces for. You know, anybody in Old Town and most specifically the granary location, so. You know. We'll we're probably going to have to promote that a little better, but that's going to be the solution during construction. And then there are additional spaces in the new Fishman Building Garage that are going to be. Available to granary tenants as well.
Yeah, I know, I I knew I knew from the, when we reviewed the plan, that there was eventual spaces that are going to be there, but. That that interim construction period, I think, is going to be painful for for a lot of people, especially. In the in the new world of curbside to go take out in addition to all the, you know, the place is packed. Figuring out an operational plan that gets people from the parking garage, makes them feel comfortable walking through. Old Town at night, be it lighting and signage and other things to try and enhance that. I think, yeah, I'd love to see the city do everything we can to make that work. And help you get out.
You know, it's been a while since we've spoken about Old Town, and yet we, over the past two or three years, we've seen some plans come in. Maybe at a future meeting and and Greg, John, checking, you know, I'll leave it up to you guys to decide what this looks like and when, but. You know, maybe a quick status on what's going on with Fishman, what's going on with. The restaurant on the corner, you know, we we changed, we we updated the site plan so that. The ground level of the project across the street from Fishman could then. Go with residential units versus commercial, you know, any other sort of activity that might be bubbling up for Old Town. Just just kind of a general sense of where where things are going with a lot of those projects. I I picked out three out of my memory. I know there's probably more than I'm thinking of, but. Kind of in general, how 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 the climate is there and and, you know, oh, the 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 plaza is getting up, getting a. Kind of a rehab too. Right, so just kind of in general, the projects that are that are active there and where where things stand and maybe maybe some what staff is doing, maybe behind the scenes if there is anything.
Yeah, we can definitely provide an update.
Yep, absolutely.
That'd be great, I appreciate that. And as I said, I, you know, I wouldn't put a deadline on it of next meeting, but you know, as soon as it feels comfortable to to put a little something together for our packet. That would be, really appreciate that. Right, alright, anything else from anybody tonight? I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads. Okay, well, have a good evening, always good to see everybody, and we're adjourned.